Oh yes, you are welcome in the name of the Lord. Oh, I can see all over you the glory of the Lord. You are welcome in the name of the Lord. Oh, you are welcoming the name of the Lord.
Oh, you are welcoming the name of God.
Oh, we can see all over you the glory of God. You are welcoming the name of God. Oh, you are welcoming the name of God. Oh yes, I welcome you in the name of God. Cause I can see all over you the glory of God. You are welcoming in the name of God. A beautiful afternoon to my beautiful seed family is another Tuesday afternoon where we study the word of God. Are you in the house, are you in the place of your business? Invite a friend, you can just share to invite a friend, invite a colleague. Tell them it's time when we gather to listen to the word of God. We gather the master fit to listen to hear what the Lord want for us today. I hope your day is going so beautifully as mine is going. And before we dive into our Bible study session, just worship God, you know? God is good. God is a good God. So worship the Father, we just love on him as, as the spirit leads, we just worship as the spirit leads. So if you are in a place where you can join in the worship, worship God. Because this God is too good. The songwriter wrote and said, I'll worship you forever because why? This God is too good. Yes, he's a good God. Ah, I don't know what it is that, you know, the situation is right now and you feel that, you may feel that God is not good. That's just a lie from the Peter faith. He is a good God. Oh glorious God, oh yes. Oh, you are beautiful King. Versatile God, we bow before your true. Yes, Lord, you are a good God. We know that, God. Ashalanti buko saliba koya tayba kanti. Lord, we have come to worship you. You are God over the earth, Lord, and we will be stay, oh yes. We will be stay and know that you are God. Ah, no matter the shakings, you are God. You know, there is nothing happening, Lord, on your behalf, no? God is not surprised by, uh, the things that are happening. No, no. You know, God, you know, uh, in you they will not just bring forth and the Lord will say, oh, you must have come up with something surprising. No, that's not God. So be stay and know that is God. Mashakosa te liba kota liberante. Lord, we worship you. You are a good God. You are El Shaddai, you are Eroide, God who sees us. Yes. He sees you. He knows your frame. He knows when you are, you know, you are in your best part of your season and he knows when you are in the valley. He's God. Ashatou sileba tayaba, Lord will bless you. Will give you all the glory because you alone deserve it all. We thank you for your provision. We thank you for your protection, God. You know, your watch says you give your angels charge over us to keep us in all our ways. Ah, Lord, we are grateful for angels, angels assigned to this community to worship us, oh God. Angels assigned to each and every one of us, angels assigned to our children, our spouses. Each and every one of us will have our angels. So Lord will bless you for those things. We don't take your blessings for granted. Oh, indeed, they are keeping us and that's why we are here. That's why we are standing because why? They kept us in all our ways. They did not allow us to dash our foot against stone. Yeah, foot against a stone. The sun did not smite us. Oh, when we are sleeping, the moon did not smite us because of your love, because of your mercy. Ah, it is written in your wall that your mercy, they are new every morning, God. Great is your faithfulness. Faithful God will worship you. Alagbadan in law will say, thank you, King of kings, Lord of lords. The Lord God Almighty, you are the one that opens and no man can shut. Ashalato silere tayba koya tayba. Libera tayba kosa kanti liba koo. Lord, we worship you. We enthrone you with our praises. Oh God, I inhabit his praise, the praises of his children. Come, Lord. Holy Spirit will welcome you. Come. Oh, we have come with a grateful heart. We have come with, you know, heart expectant, oh God. Full, oh God, to, you know, to, to, to hear from the Father. We have come, God. Oh, shalato sabakota. The Bible says the expectation of the righteous would not be cut off. What are your expectations, you know, when you tune into this gathering? And if you don't have, I want to tear up your heart. You can start, you know, telling God that expectation that you have. Oh, the word of God is life, is power. So when you are in a, in a, in a, in a studying like this, don't just, oh, assume it's just Bible study, no? Oh, the healing power can flow when the word, you know, is being, is being, is being, you know, dissected upon. Masholoroto sabakoya. Salakoto silaba. Lord, we know that you are here with us. So we are grateful. Holy Spirit, oh, welcome you. Lord, I thank you on behalf of this community. I thank you for what you are doing in our life, oh God. It may, you know, look as if, you know, oh, you, we are, we are walking slowly, but God is faithful. Oh, God is faithful. He's faithful. He is a faithful God. Lord, I am so grateful. With a grateful heart, Lord, with a song of praise, God, I have come to bless you, Lord. Shalato saliba koto sila. Rea bote kaba shela talibaran taybokoya. Shalako saliba kote salaba. For you are God, you are. Oh, from beginning to the end, yes. There's no place for argument, Lord. You are God of by yourself, this God. You are God of by yourself, yet you want to have fellowship with this being. Oh, his mind, you are so mindful of him. You made us a little lower than the angels, but yet you say we should come. Let us reason together. Ah, mashalebo sonto sila rataiba. And then in your mercy, even though our sins is as red as color, you say we should come. You will make them white as snow. Oh, thank you for the gift of salvation. Thank you that you send your son Jesus to come die for us, oh God. Oh, it is this gift that is why we can come boldly to the throne of grace. Ashalato sileba kota liba. Lord will bless you. We honor you, Jesus. You are a good, good father. You are a gracious king, gracious king, you are. Oh, bow before your throne. Oh, Leoli. You are the Lord God Almighty, oh yes. It's a privilege to worship at your feet. Oh, Leoli. The Lord God Almighty. Oh, he's a justice to bow before you. Oh, with a grateful heart, I lift my voice to you. Ekayaba katilaba. Oh, with a grateful heart, I lift my voice to you. Oh yes, proclaiming, Lord, you reign. Oh yes, oh, with a grateful heart, we lift our voice to you. Oh, proclaiming, Lord, you reign, oh yes. Oh, great are you, God, you are. You are greatly to be praised, oh yes. Oh, you are greatly to be praised. Oh, Father, you reign. You know, take out your time, open up your hearts to ponder on the greatness of God. Oh, great are you, God, is a great God. And then this great God is your father, Mashatou Saliba Kota. You are of a blessed tribe, Kashala Teybokoza. Don't let the enemy, you know, to whisper lies to you. Oh, because of, you know, your present circumstances, God is not with you. That's a lie. God with us is the hope of glory. Oh, great are you, God, you're God, you are great. Oh, greatly to be praised, oh yes. You are greatly to be praised, oh yes. Father, you reign, you reign. Oh, great are you, God, oh yes, you are. You are greatly to be praised, oh yes. You are greatly to be praised. Father, you reign. Have the Lord been good to you? Of course, you are alive. And Bible says, let everything that has bread praise the Lord. So wherever you are, just worship God. You know, release your, because sometimes there is so much in our heart and it's difficult to really worship God. You know, picture yourself standing before the throne of grace. Releasing your essence of worship to your father. Are you going to do that? Are you doing that with a song? Are you just, you know, buying down, pouring on her, pouring out your heart in tongues to the father? Are you just, you know, you are just there meditating on his greatness? Whatever posture you are taking, make sure your heart is worshiping God. Make sure you are seeing yourself standing before his throne of grace. That this great God choose to call me his own. Oh, I'm the, I'm the beloved of the father. Oh, shalato saliba kota keba. Eya la tayba kosa labaronto siba. If you are, you are great, you are kind, you are merciful. We know God and we are grateful. Oh, we are grateful to you. Lord, we are grateful to you. You see, I'm so grateful to the Lord. I am. So I'm just, you know, you know, I'm seeing myself in that position. Standing before the throne of God. You know, offering my sacrifice of praise, of worship to the father. Oh, no matter where you find yourself, you can take out few minutes, you know, to sincerely worship the Lord. He's a great God. He's the God. He is this God. This God that choose to call me his own. For you are God. From beginning to the end. Oh, there's no place for argument. You are God of by yourself. And you are God. You are a great King, oh yes. Oh, a great God above all the gods. Sing with me, oh, our God, our God. He's a great God, eh, abukasha. A great King above all the gods. Oh, our God, our God. He's a great God, eh, abukasha. A great King above all the gods. Eh, abukasha. Who this my God, oh yeah. Oh, a great King above all the gods. You are a great God. Oh, shalatebako salibakota san te liba. Rebukoka libarante kayaba shante sebako ta. Larante liboroko sota libakaya ba shante kasi. You are a great God. You are a great King. Ashalata silebu runto silabo kayaba. You are this God above all the gods. All other gods, they are the works of men. They have eyes, they can't see. They have ears, they can't hear. But my God is not dead. He is alive. Mashalabo kosa libarantika. You are not serving a dead God. So picture yourself before this throne. Ashalato sileba kota. Love on the Father, pour yourself to this God. Irrata lobosoteli barante kayaba. Reketela bo saliba koshalate byantika. Oh, this God is a great God. This God is a big God. Oh, how often did you pour your, you know, your offering to the Father? Do you do it only when, you know, you receive a fat, you know, bank account or where things are rosy, rosy? Oh, the Bible says we should give God praise at all times. Saying everything, give thanks for the things you understand and the things you do not understand. It's that we should give thanks for this is the will of God concerning us. Lord, we are giving thanks. Oh, we don't need to understand, but we know we are a grateful people. Ashalato salibarante kayaba sonte. Retelebo shaliba kota labakatalika. Oh, we give thanks. We love on you, Jesus. You are God. You are the ancient of days. You are the I am that I am. You are the Arugo or Ja. Oh, there is no one like you. Oh, the house of fish and God. You are the great God. Oh yes, you are. Mashé abakose labakota. Eh, lebarakoto salibakota libayande. Eh, bakusalarande bakoya ta. Eh, lebaraku shalabareka paka eka san te liba. Lord, you are good. Oh yes, you are, you are, you are kind. God is a good God. He's a kind God. Beyond our, you know, our, our Bible study sessions, you know, when we just come out, you know, and pour our hearts to God. Beyond this place, just stay in your closet. You know, my generation is so much in the ori, so we have bring everything in our life, including our relationship with God. So when we, when we are there just spending time with God, we think it's a waste of time. Oh, staying here, you know, two hours, three hours, doing what? You know, it won't, won't, won't fetch me money. So we see that as a waste of time, but that's not it. You say, in the presence of God, there is always an exchange and then it's not, uh, uh, all the time, you know, um, you receiving blessing. Sometimes it's you just blessing the Lord. Sometimes you are just, not because you have any request, but you just want to love on this God. You just want to have that fellowship. And sometimes when you, when you speak to your friends, it's not because you want to request anything from them, right? It's just because you just want to, you know, enjoy that fellowship with your friends. That's it with the father. So just take our time at times, shut yourself out, just stay there and just enjoy this God. You know, serving God is a beautiful thing it is. Uh, and I pray that the Lord will give us understanding. Um, we are limited by time as humans, but we know that our God is not limited. So when we worship, God will come with this understanding. We love on the Father, trusting him that everything we align as he has planned, as he has desire for our life. So what do we do today? Welcome once again, if you're just joining us. Um, we studied the Bible. This session majorly is to encourage believer to want to study the Bible. The Bible, you know, some people call it the rule book. Yes, it's a book having given to us to guide our life. Here on it as we navigate. We thank God for his mercies, you know, beautiful men that the Lord has raised have also, you know, written good books to help us. But, um, the Lord will want us to leave, but you said the Bible is the first book. It's okay if you are using other good books, you know, to complement your study, you know, your life as a believer. But don't neglect the Bible. You don't exchange listening to message, um, reading books, uh, for the Bible, no? It is good. You go and say shit out yourself. What does this word really say? What does the Bible, what, what is God saying in this instance, you know? You'll be amazed more the things that, you know, are in the Bible. Some believers don't know it because why? Uh, Bible is just like, you know, decorative ornament in our house. Some of us use it as pillows, but that's not it. It is meant to be read. So this session basically is to, you know, encourage believers to read the Bible. If you be following us, we'll be treating the book of Romans and today we'll be doing Romans chapter fourteen. You know, God has been really helping us with the sessions, you know, giving us knowledge. Teaching us as he wants us to learn and I know beyond this session, um, as many, you know, go back to their Bibles to really read. I know that the Lord is, you know, opening our things to them that he want to, want them to know. Um, the Bible is that one book that will never get old. The Bible say it is spirits. Spirits don't die. They are alive. Yes. So it is spirit and it is life. So anytime, even if you have read that scripture a thousand times, if you go back to read it again. You'll see life. The Lord will show you life from that scripture. So if you are there, invite a friend, tell them it's an hour with the Father. Can you go out and check out a playlist, an hour with the Father, the Gospel of John. So and just check out the previous studies we have been doing. So Romans chapter fourteen and I'm reading from the Amplified Bible. Why the Amplified today is a bit new, simpler to. It really made this chapter really simple for understanding. So I'm going to turn right to the Amplified Bible and then continue. It said, verse one said, as for the one whose faith is weak. Accepting into your fellowship, but not for the purpose of quarreling over his opinions. Best to one man's faith permits him to eat everything. Why the wicked believers, why the wicked believer eats only vegetable? To avoid eating visually unclaimed meat or something previously considered unclaimed. The one who eats everything is not to look down on who, on the one who does not eat. And the one who does not eat must not criticize or pass judgment on the one who eats everything. For God has accepted him. You know, if you read from this verse one to three, and if you are coming from, you know. This is apostle Paul, you know, giving, you know, instructions, writings to the church, how they ought to behave. We know that these writings are for the church. Now, if you are a student of the Bible, if you look at, um, the life of, you know, God with his covenant people, the Israelites. You know, there are some things that the Lord asked them not to eat. There are some clean animals, there are some, this. So the Jewish believers who have, you know, have believed in Christ Jesus. Most of them, some of them, you know, are still afraid to, you know, enjoy the liberty they have in Christ Jesus. And then those that have the liberty, you know, those that are enjoying their liberty, they end up, you know, overdoing their enjoyment. So apostle Paul is trying to, you know, strike a balance here. I'm going to read it. It says, it says, as for the one whose faith is weak. Said, accepting into your fellowship, but not of the purpose of quarreling over his opinion. So that person is, you know, that believer that still, it still has, it's true. I'm trying to, you know, come from the standpoint apostle Paul is saying, because if you read out through the Old Testament, you will see that. There are animals that the Lord asked them not to eat because why? It is an unclaimed animal. So that basic instructions that the Lord, you know, gave to the children of Israel. So many of these Jewish believers that, you know, came to Christ, they are not fully, they don't, they don't fully understand the liberty in Christ. Some of them are still struggling to, you know, eat this and eat that. And, um, you know, this, um, you know, really helped me understand when Daniel was telling, um, the governor of us Indian. That they don't want to defy themselves with the king's portion because why? They know that in those days, you know, there are a lot of sacrifices that goes on. So kings and, you know, gods of nations, they sacrifice animals to their gods, right? So here as a Jewish person, so it's the kind of, they don't, they have some kind of meat, they don't eat that, some that are unclaimed. Apostle Paul is telling us, so if you have such person, we are going to marry it, Daniel, you know, as where to today's believer, day to day life. God in his mercy, we don't sacrifice rams again, right? God did not, you know, give us that laws not to eat this and eat that. So Apostle Paul is trying to explain the liberty in Christ and, you know, don't use your liberty to cause another to stumble. So let's read. It says, so one man's faith permits him to eat everything. Those that understand their liberty in Christ, they eat everything. It said, why the wicked believer eats only vegetable? To avoid eating visually unclaimed meat on something previously considered. This is why their faith is weak. They might say, oh, I don't know if this sacrifice to idol or not. I don't know if this animal is an unclaimed one or not. So this is what it says. So the one who eats everything, while you are enjoying that liberty in Christ. It said, not to look down on the one who does not eat. And the one who does not eat must not criticize or pass judgment on the one who eats everything. Since I said two way thing, don't say because, um, you, you don't, you are not fully exercising your liberty in Christ. Does not mean that those of the, you know, exercising their liberty in Christ are proud people or they are stupid people. You, I don't know if you are trying to understand what Apostle Paul is trying to say. So it's a two way thing. You had fully understand your liberty in Christ. Don't use it to rub off on somebody that this person, you know, and you that is, does not, you that is still, you know, you've not come into that fullness. You don't, you don't understand that full right you have in Christ. Don't think that you are better or better off all these people. They are sinning, they are, you know, overdoing things. So this is a picture Apostle Paul is trying to paint here. So then verse four say, who are you to judge the servant of another? Before his own master, he stands approved or falls. And he who served the master, that is the Lord, no, this is using the General Temier. Um, withstand for the Lord is able to make him stand. Um withstand for the Lord is able to make him stand. Um, you know, this verse four, you know, I took our time to really go and look at the word judgment and then. Um dictionary, Merriam-Webster gave me this, this sign said capitalize. The final judging of humankind, then there's one that struck me, say a divine sentence or decision. You know, because of someone's lifetime, we don't understand. We've passed a dividing test on that person, we have decided that this person is not serving God. Who are you to judge another man's servant? This is what Apostle Paul is trying to say, so I'm, I'm going to bring it from the standpoint, so those, those Jewish believers. So they see those ones that are, you know, eating meat as people eating things sacrificed to idols. So they feel that those people, they are unclean. Apostle Paul is saying, who are you to tell, judge another man, who are you to give a final decision over another's man's life? We are out of servants of one master, so who are you to say this person is an unclaimed person, so therefore I would not listen to this person? Or who are you to say because this person is eating only vegetables? Or is eating, you know, he hasn't understand his, his full liberty in the Lord. So therefore he's unfit to come to Christ, who are you to say so? This is Apostle Paul, you know, laying the foundations and saying, no, this is not how I ought to be in the body of Christ. We know that we have liberty in Christ Jesus, yes, but there are those that still. Still, they are still weak, their faith, that is, I put it, so their faith is still weak. So they, they, they still, they still have some doubts and don't. That are, you know, not as if, they are not act rightly saying to God, they're just, you know, that practice that they don't do. Because why? It affects their weak conscience, they feel that they are sinning if they do so. You that enjoy your liberty, don't condemn that person. Don't think that that person is, no, is, you don't, you just say that person doesn't, doesn't serve God well, no. It is not of you to, so this is what Apostle Paul is saying. And then he said, one person regards one day as better or more important than another. While another regards every day the same as any other. Let everyone be fully convinced, assured, satisfied in his own mind. He who observed the day, observe it for the Lord. He who eats, eats for the Lord, says and gives thanks to God. Why he who abstains, abstains for the Lord and gives thanks to God? So if, you know, if you, like I was, like, you know, the, the foundation I was trying to lay, I said. This, this Apostle Paul, you know, most of the, the brethren there, the Jewish people, you know. Then coming from the standpoint of their relationship, you know, with God, giving them, you know, Moses and then the rules, those lines, so. Some of them are, they still have weak faith, they still struggle, you know, with fully submitting to the liberty they have in Christ Jesus. So some of them still observe keeping the Sabbath day only, so these days, so it's kind of causing conflict. Those that are not keeping it, you know, you feel like you are not doing the way of the Lord. Those that are doing it feel that, you know, they are the only, only ones keeping the law of the Lord. Apostle Paul is saying, whether it is in you, you decide to keep that day, it is okay. Whether you decide to, you know, say every day is the same thing, it's still okay. Apostle Paul is trying to balance it here for us. He said, one person regards one the better or more important than another. Why another regards every day as the same? He said, let everyone be fully convinced. I know one thing that the Lord give to us when you are in him is the spirit of God. It is the spirit of God that will convince you that this is the way of the Lord. So let everyone be fully convinced, assured in his own mind. What is that mind telling you that these days that you are observing? Oh, is he, am I doing it unto the Lord? And if you look at the verse, he said, he who observes the day, observe it for the Lord. So the, the, the bottom line is you are doing it in the name of the Lord. That's just what Apostle Paul is trying to, you know, illustrate for us here. He said, he who eats, you know, you that decide not to eat um in, and a meat. Because you feel that it's an unclean, you are doing it not because you want to despise your brethren that are doing it. But because you are doing it unto the Lord and you that is eating, it's not because you want to, you know, add shine. Um, the wicked believers and say, you see, me, I'm enjoying my liberty in Christ, you are not enjoying, no, you're not doing it like that. You are doing it unto the Lord. He said, since he gives thanks to God, why ah, why he who abstains? Abstains for the Lord and gives thanks to God. None of us live for himself, for his own benefit, but for the Lord. And none of us dies for himself, but for the Lord. And then verse eight says, if we live, we live for the Lord, and if we die, we die for the Lord. So then, whether we live or die, we are the Lord. This is the bottom line in Apostle Paul is trying to illustrate here. You seen, because I believe this, you know, was causing a lot of rift among the believers. Those that are fully enjoying their liberty in Christ Jesus, their faith in Christ and those that I know are still restricted by. The rules and regulation that, you know, they got from um, um, you know, that covenant that God gave them. So it's, it's kind of bringing, Apostle Paul is trying to, you know. We are all doing, whether you are doing it for the Lord, whether you are living as a child of God, your lifestyle should be for the Lord. When you die, you should die, you know that you die in the Lord, so Apostle Paul is trying to strike a balance. So how does that relate with us, you know, as a day to day, you know, as believers? You know, when you read the Bible, you have to apply it to your life, right? How do I, you know, apply this to my life? And the bottom line is, whatever you are doing, as you are doing it unto the Lord, it is good. But it shouldn't cause your brother or your brethren to stumble. Or I'm enjoying my liberty in the, in the Lord, whether this person likes it or not, you have to accept, no. That's not what Apostle Paul is trying to say here. He said, why you are living for the Lord, you have to be conscious, you know, of your, of the faith of your brother. That means, uh, uh, I begin to understand that we all, you know, have to bear each other burden fitwise. As I am growing in the Lord, is my brother growing as well? Am I doing things that, you know, is causing my, especially uh in the garden of believers? My attitude, you know, when we gather for fellowship, i- is it causing my brethren to stumble? Did they, you know, when they, when they leave that place of fellowship, did they go home and they fear as if they are not children of God? Because, you know, you overdo that liberty you have in Christ. So these are things we have to ponder on as children of God. And then verse nine says, for Christ died and lived again for this reason, that he might be Lord. Of both the dead and the living. But you, why do you criticize your brother? And then that's um. Um, that's ten, see? But you, why do you criticize your brother? Or you again, why do you look down on your believing brother or regarding with content? Yes, because you are enjoying your liberty in Christ. Um, you see the one that, you know, is still struggling, is still weak, it feels that if I do this thing, it might be a sin against God. And then you are using your liberty in Christ to add shine. He said, who are you? He said, why do you criticize your brother? He said, you again, why do you look down on your believing brother or regarding with content? For we, we all stand before the judgment seat of God. Who alone is judged, for it is written in the scripture, you know. Um, I also want to, you know, add this because, you know, when the Bible, this, this, this judging, you know. It's not, it's not a lack of correct, correction, like, because sometimes. When you want to correct somebody in love and then you hear, why are you judging me? No, there is not, that, this, there's a place for correction. So this, this, this judgment, like, I thought that's why I took her time to, you know, define that word. He said, a divine decision, so in your whole heart, you have decided that this person. Is the, is, you know, is not what serving God, that is, you have passed that judgment too. So correcting someone in love is not judgment, you know. When you see someone, you know, hearing in the things of Christ and then you are doing it with love in your hearts. And God knows that it's out of love, it's not that if you are just, you know, in your heart, you've crucified that person, that this person is, cannot be redeemed. It's two different things and my prayer is that the Lord, you know, there's mercy. We open up our hearts to see, because sometimes, because of this, this, this kind of, people are so afraid, you know. To want to reach out to somebody that is airy, no, 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 no. Uh, if you are seeing, you, you can, you know, look, wash your brother air and then you don't, you don't make an at- attempt to want to restore that person. So it's a two different thing, um, as we read, uh, I know that the Lord will give us understanding to eat. And then it says, for we, we all stand before the judgment seat of God, who alone is judged. For it is written in scriptures, as I leave says the Lord, every niche shall bow to me. And every tongue shall give praise to God. So then, each of us will give an account of himself to God. You know, scriptures like this are scriptures that, you know, when I read it, I just, you know, pause and then. Each of us, you see, there is no, there is no middle ground in this place. And that's why I, I encourage people, Apostle Paul says, knowing the terror of the Lord. Will persuade men, nobody can force you to come serve God. But with our words, with our prayer, would persuade you that this part of the Lord is the righteous part. He said, every one of us will give account. You know, in our worship today, I mentioned that, you know, picture yourself standing before the throne of God. Now, you know, picture yourself standing before God, giving account of this life that he has given to you. What will you tell the Father that you are doing with this life? Or what will you tell God, oh, you gave me eighty years, what did I do with it? You gave me sister seventy hundred, what did I do with it? And, and you see, this, this, this message like this, scripture like this is not to, you know, condemn us. You see, God is not a court of condemnation, he didn't send his son to condemn us, but you see. Scripture like this, you know, should tear up your hearts to begin to ponder on this life. Because salvation is a gift, but you see, receiving a gift is one thing. And then using that gift, utilizing that gift is another thing. Imagine somebody gave you a perfume as a gift, you know it's a perfume, you just jump in there, you don't use it. So the value will be, will just diminish, so God gave you the salvation, what are you doing with it? So picture yourself, you know, if you, if you have a paper Bible on the line, this scripture, scripture like this, the guide of. Said, then each of us will give an account of himself to God. And thank God for his mercy, if you've not started the journey of purpose, it's okay. If you are still there, you know, you don't understand what God has called you to do, it's okay. It is time you can just go before God in humility. And if I stand before you, God, what will I tell you, I, you know, I did with it? You know, like I said, you know, sometimes, you know, when we hear giving account, we think it's only related to ministry, you know. No, that's not it. As a, as a nurse, which the Lord called you to give account of that nursing, did you do it as unto the Lord? You know, as a furniture maker, if the Lord asks you to give accounts of that life, did you do it as unto the Lord? Or you do it, you know, with self in view. So I want you, you know, as, as after the session, just take our time, stay in the presence of God and reflect. Am I leaving my life? Because, you know, the Bible says, whether we were living, we are living to the Lord. And if we die, we die to the Lord, so if you are giving account to this God, that's still worship. You know, because they say, like, like that parable, Jesus said, the master will come and ask us, what do you do with that talent I gave to you? What do you do with that life? What will you tell the master? It's not too late to start, it is not, wherever you are, whatever age. If you're hearing the sound of my voice and the Lord is using this voice to compete you, surrender your hearts to the Lord. You know, turn that, reflect, stay in his presence and reflect. Truly, if I'm standing before the Maker, what will I say? Those children that the Lord gave to me, that I raised them, you know, as unto the Lord. That business idea the Lord gave to me, those employees that, you know, came across my path. You see, everyone that the Lord, you know, you know, brought it into your path, you know, it's not coincident. When a person leaves you, the person leaves you drained or the person leaves you full of life. So God, these things that you think that they don't matter, they do. The Bible says that every word that you say, you will give account, so don't, it's not, it's not, the Bible doesn't flatter us. So everything matters, but thank God for his mercy, right? He's a merciful God, it's not too late to start, it's not too late to reflect, start reflecting your, on your life. And say, am I doing this unto the Lord? And then verse thirteen says, then let us not criticize one another anymore. But rather determine this, not to put an obstacle or a stumbling block or a source of temptation. In another believer's way, this is the whole purpose of Apostle Paul giving the illustration of meat. He said, so that you will not serve others' temptation to your brother, we are all running this race. But he said, the Bible says, woe to him, all of, offense will come, offenses will come, but you see, you that is bringing the offenses. Woe to you, you that is causing another believer to stumble, the Lord is washing you. So he said, he said, then let us not criticize one another, don't judge people. See, like I said, there's a place for correction, but you see, like, you see Apostle Paul was using the illustration of, you know, those, those laws. That the, the law, the, the, the coming to Christ has done away with. Those, those, those law, like, you know, washing of your hands before you eat, washing of the bowls, art to eat this and honor to eat that. So those kind of laws, so some people, their, 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 their faith is still weak, so they still practice those things. So Apostle Paul is saying, because you know that somebody is practicing those things, you don't condemn the person, you don't put his side and say, oh. You are not in God though, you, you've not come to, you are not fully in Christ because you are still doing these things, no. Apostle Paul said, you should not cause a believer to stumble because of your liberty in Christ. You that knows that, oh, yes, my faith in Christ, as, you know, I'm done away with, uh, I've done away with those things, it's okay for you. He said, so, but rather be determined that as I'm leaving my life, as I'm enjoying that liberty in Christ, is not to put an obstacle. I will not serve as a stumbling block or a source of temptation in another believer's way. And then verse forty says, I know, and I am convinced as one the Lord Jesus Christ, that nothing is uncleaned. Nothing is spiritually divided, nothing is unonly, unholy in itself. But nevertheless, it is unclean to anyone who thinks it's unclean. Apostle Paul is saying, now that he's in Christ, he is convinced that nothing is unclean. God, that was saying, when the Lord made everything, he said they were what, they were good. He said, but nevertheless, if a wicked believer, you know, think that it is unclean, so he's staying away from it. Don't, you know, bring your liberty and say, ah, it's not unclean, oh, you are, no, 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 don't, don't criticize, don't judge a person. You see, don't use your liberty to serve as a stumbling block to that person, you see, so. Anyone who thinks is unclean, to him is unclean, leave that person, you know. He said, if your brother is being hot or offended because of food that you insist on eating. He say, you are no longer walking in love towards your brethren, so we are to love, we are to walk in love towards it. So that is why, if you are doing a thing that is causing your brother to stumble. As a believer in Christ Jesus, as you are walking in love with that brethren, you ought not to do it, no, no, these are deep tensions, right? Because some, some time we don't put these things into consideration, as long as it is okay with us. As long as, you know, it's not a sin against God, it's okay if your brother likes it or not, it's none of your business. But no, Apostle Paul is telling us, if that thing that you are doing is as a source of temptation for a fellow believer. He said, don't do it, don't, and then look at what the illustration uses, it said food, because some of us, you know. I believe, you know, food is the, 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 the height in rights, if you have what to eat, you are okay. So that, a lot of time is the final one, he said, so if your brother is being hot. Or offended because of food. Or offended because of food that you insist, no, I like the applied version, you know, it, it breaks it out. He says, so some of us, we insist on doing things that offends people because why? Because we think that is not an outright sin to God. If he's offending your brother, he doesn't care. You don't care. No, from now on, you have to be conscious. That your actions and inactions should not cause your brother to stumble. Because some of us, some people, what they do is they wash our lifestyle. Our lifestyle guide them to believe in God. And then they begin to see that, ah, this kind of thing. I'm not sure this thing that person is doing is from God, though. But you that, you know, because you, you have that liberty in Christ, you know. But another brother is, you know, being tempted because of that, your liberty. You have to call yourself to action. He said. He said, then you are no longer walking in love towards him because you have to love your brother. I would say, we should love people as Christ loves us, right? Here, I say, I, 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 let, let's continue this. Therefore do, okay, we'll stop at verse fifteen, right? It's okay. If your brother has been hot or offended. That you insist on eating, you are no longer walking in love towards him, that brother. You're no longer walking, you're no longer walking in love towards somebody. What, what, what are you practicing? He says, so do not let what you eat destroy and spiritually harm one. For whom Christ died. You know, we are all believers, Christ. He said, every one of us was redeemed. By the precious blood of Jesus. His soul was sacrificed to bring us back to, to reconcile us back to the Father. So because of, you know, your attitude and your actions, you are letting that person that Christ died for, for. He said, therefore, do not let what is a good thing for you. Because of your freedom to choose, yes, like I said, it's not a sin. You already understand your freedom in Christ, so you can choose, you know, living your cry, your life as Christ would want it. But take note. He said, therefore, do not let what is a good thing, it's a good thing, it's not a bad thing. For you, because of your freedom to choose, be spoken of as evil by someone else. For the kingdom of God is not a matter of eating and drinking what one likes. So. It's not a lifetime of, let me live as I like. It's a lifetime guided by Christ. And walking in love towards your fellow believer. And then let's continue reading. He said, for the kingdom of God is not a matter of eating. And drinking what one likes, but of righteousness and peace and joy in the Holy Spirit. In what Bible says, man shall not live by bread alone, right? It's not by, oh, because I now have liberty in Christ. The Bible says, I can eat this, I can eat that because to me it is clean. And then your brother is washing from afar and say, ah. What kind of a lifestyle this person that claims to, you know, know God living because of you? That your older brother is getting tempted. The Bible says, it is not a good thing. He says, for the kingdom of God is not a matter of eating and drinking what one likes. And no, I, I believe we can, you know, we can, we can replace this with not living as one likes. Though Apostle Paul, you know, is using eating. I believe we can, we can use that word like. And the kingdom of God is not a matter of living the way you like, doing things the way you like. He said, but of righteousness and peace and joy in the Holy Spirit. For the one who serves Christ in this way, recognizes that food choice is secondary. Is susceptible to God and it is approved by men. Let me make an illustration. Let's say, for example, to your conscience, it's okay to you. To drink a bottle of beer. One say, why? Don't misjudge me. I'm not advocating for you to be a drink, to, you know, to be a drunkard. But let's just say for you, you believe. And then you have a fellow young believer. That thinks that, see, that this, this thing, no, I don't think this is a, a good lifestyle as a believer. No, this is not your righteous lifestyle. But you, in your, you know, liberty that you think is a good thing. You drag that fellow believer, every time he sees you, you know, consuming that. Her person is, you know, growing weak in his faith every day. This is what Apostle Paul is trying to illustrate. He said, don't think, he says, he says that you should recognize that food, food, that your choice of food. Is a secondary choice. So if I decide not to be eating meats, it is okay. If I decide, oh, all my life, I want to be eating fruits and vegetable, it's okay. But the bottom line is, you are doing it unto the Lord. You are not doing it to, you know. Make your other brethren feel that because they are eating meats, they are living an unclean lifestyle. No, 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 no. That is the bottom line to this, this is the verses that we have been reading. And then it says. He said, for food is recognizing that food choice is secondary, is acceptable to God. Let me go back there. For the one who served Christ in this way, what is the way? Righteousness, peace. Making following peace with all men and joy. He said, for the one who served Christ in this way. Recognizing that food choice is secondary, is acceptable to God and is approved by men. So then, let us pursue with enthusiasm the things which make for peace. And the building up of one another, things which lead to spiritual growth, not food. So that means you can abstain from eating if it causes your brother to offend. You can abstain for not eating this type, type of food if this my brother thinks that this food will cause him to offend, offend. If you, um, let's, let's, let's continue reading. And then the. And then I think that's, um, verse eighteen. Verse twenty, to do not for the sake of food tear down the work of God. All things indeed are ceremonially claimed, but they are wrong for the person. Who eats and offends another conscious in the process. Like I told you before from the start, I said, you know, this is, this, thi- this, this is from the context of Apostle Paul, he's, you know, illustrating. Uh, you know, because some of them have come to Christ, they are now mismystified in church. And the same thing today, we have mismystified in church. He said, so now there's this set of, you know, Jewish believer, even though they are in Christ. They still believe that, you know, meats are sacrificed to idols, they are, they don't eat it. They eat only vegetables. There are others who believe that, oh, every, I'm now in Christ, everything is clean. They eat meat. So it's those that, you know, are eating it, don't, don't use it to offend. Your big brother. So Apostle Paul is saying that, you, your, your big brother is washing you, saying that, ah. This person is eating and neglecting, what kind of Christ this person is serving. He said, you should abstain from eating that meat. So that you will not cause your brother to fall into temptation. These are deep things, right? So what kind of lifetime do you have as a child of God? That you think that is liberty in Christ? And then it is causing another brethren to stumble in the things of God. You think you are enjoying God's goodness, you know, by the mercy of God and by the, you know. The, the message we are, we are bringing. If you know that that lifetime. Especially maybe, for example, you're living with, especially young people that know, that squats together, living in camps, you know. As a believer, what lifestyle that are you living that, you know, a weak brethren is wondering as, ah. Are you sure that this person is, you know, you have offended that person conscience? Because why? Look at what the verse twenty said. He said, do not for the sake of food. And Apostle Paul is using food as illustration. But for exam, I'm just saying, what other things that you have in your life that, you know. Can cause a believer to stumble. He said, do not for the sake of food, tear down the work of God. That person is a work of God, you know. God has built that person to that standard because we are all bought with a price. Don't for the sake of food, tear down the work of God. All things are indeed ceremonially claimed. But they are wrong for the person who eats and offends another conscious in the process. This is the Bible. So if you think your freedom to live as it, as you like. The Bible says it is wrong if it is offending another man conscious, another believer's conscious. He said, so it is good to do the right thing and not to eat meats or drink wine. Or do anything. So you see that, uh, in, in, I, I've got sometime, when you read, like, you say, eh, it, it's better to meet our food now. No, 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 no. He was using that illustration because, um, I think that. That time, I believe that the, the, the conflict they have, you know. So, but he said, anything that offends your brother. And weakens him spiritually. So that's your liberty. It shouldn't be, it not, it should not be a process that is weakening another believer spiritually. The faith wish you have that gives you freedom of choice, have as your own conviction. Before God, just keep it between yourself and God. As a child of God, I believe I can eat anything because why? They claim that conviction should be with me and myself. I should not go and, you know, use it to brag because that's some people that believe I can't eat. This food from this person because why? They believe it is not from a believer. Or this person, this food, it provides to their God, I can't eat it. Don't go and, you know, enjoy your liberty in the front of the person. The person will now, you know, cause the person to stumble. Apostle Paul say, if we should do the right thing, that we should abstain from such thing. Let's read it again. He said, the faith which, as verse twenty-two, the faith wish you have that gives you freedom of choice, yes, the faith in Christ Jesus. Have as your own conviction before God. God knows. He said, just keep it between yourself and God, seeking his way. Say, happy is he who has no reason to condemn himself for what he approved. Yes. If I know that this is not an outright sin against God and I'm doing it, happy is me. But I should not do is to cause another brother to stumble. Let me, uh, let me give you a fine illustration. Let's use, you know, washing movies. Um, some people think that if you're watching a movie, you're singing against God, how can you be watching a movie? Some people don't not believe that watching the movies is sin. So, but let's say you are living with a person. Who believe that if you're spending all your time watching movie, you are just, you're, you're, you're not a child of God. So what is Apostle Paul trying to tell us here? So because you know that it's not a sin. Do it when the person is not there. So the person will not, you know, will not have an offense in his heart. I believe this is a, you know, this little illustration can just, you know, you know, cle- give us a, a clear understanding. He said, that faith wish you have that gives you freedom of choice. Have as your own conviction before God. Not when you see the person around. That is when you will not start all your series to start washing. No. When the person is not around, you can't do, you know, take your time and watch your movies. But when the person is around. Because you don't want to cause your brother to, you know, to stunt that person's spiritual growth, you don't do it. Apostle Paul said, it is the right thing for conscious sake. Because that person too is the work of the Lord. So painting when the person will grow into that maturity, to know that this thing is not a sin. You are there guiding him, him or her. You are not there as a stumbling block and saying, whoa, you are, you are not as. You don't know anything. You just cross your leg and begin to, you know, no, 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 no. You are there. I pray the Lord give us understanding to these things. And then verse twenty-two says. But he who is asserting about eating a particular thing is condemned if he hits. If you think that. If I'm spending time watching movie, I'm singing against God. If you do it, it's already a sin already for you. But if to you is not a sin, your conscience is free. He said, because he is not acting from faith. Whatever is not from faith is sin. Whatever is done without doubt is sinful. You see why the Bible says, it is impossible, without faith, it is impossible to please God, right? Yes. So whatever you are doing in that, are you sure that this thing I'm doing? Is it right? If your conscience is saying, don't eat this thing because to you, you believe it has been offered to idols. So therefore, if I eat it now, ah, I've been defied. Don't eat. You that, who think it's okay, everything is clear, as long as it comes to you, you are a child of God. Eat it, but don't eat it to cause, to serve as a stumbling block to another believer. And then I wrote something here. I said, I said, it's whole, if you were going to read that scripture, I say, it all makes sense, you know. When the Bible is saying we should esteem one another, which means that if we are to weigh our actions. And inaction, if what I'm about to do will cause a believer, a fellow brother to stumble. I should not do it. But when I read a scripture, Ephesians, chapter two, verse one to eight. Let's read that, um, Ephesians, chapter two. Sorry, I said Ephesians. Philippians, chapter two, verse one to eight. I believe that we've, you know, gotten some understanding. You see, um, uh, working with God is not, isn't, yeah. I don't want to use the word, you know, that to make us feel as if it's, it's, it's something very rigid, no. But it's a serious matter. Because some of us will just live as we, we ought to live. We don't even care if. Somebody has been offended by our lifestyle or in the name of, I'm enjoying my liberty in Christ. But from this scripture now, we have learned that, no, as a believer. Your lifestyle should not cause another believer to stumble. That freedom you have in Christ. Should not serve as a stumbling block to another believer, especially if you, this person is a weak believer. He has not come to that maturity to understand some things. Your actions should be guided by love. Love towards that brethren, not, oh, whether he believes or not, it doesn't concern me, it is his own, no. God wants us, you know, to be responsible for all that belief. But that is why he said, we are what? One body. We are one body in Christ. So God wants us, as you are growing, your brother should be growing with you. Let's read Philippians, chapter two. Verse one to eight. God's name is love. You are a great God. You are Father. Oh, yes. I'm going to read verse one to eight. He said, therefore, if there is any consolation in Christ. If any comfort of love, even fellowship of the Spirit, if any affection and mercy fulfill my joy. By being like-minded. This is the same Apostle Paul, right? Having the same love, being of one accord, of one mind. Let nothing be done through selfish ambition or conceit. But in loneliness of mind, let each esteem others better than himself. Let each of you look not only for his own interest, but also for the interest of others. Why did I read this scripture? If you are esteeming others, other than yourself, you will not want your brother to stumble. You will not want a growing believer to stumble. You'll be, you know, you'll be happy that, ah, this person has come to Christ. I want to see them grow. So you'll be happy to, you know, give up things that will cause them to stumble, right? If you are, you know, if you have that interest in hearts. There is no, um. There's no award-winning prayer, uh, person, no. Or there's no award-winning, um, follower of God. No, or there's no award-winning, um, follower of God, no. Or there's this award-winning believer, no, 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 no. We are all the body of Christ, we are all, we are all the body of Christ. So you should have interest, ha, as I'm growing, ha, I'm growing. That fellowship you have, especially as, you know, as an ecclesia, that body, you should be conscious that. This my brother in Christ that were in the same fellowship, they are all growing. Not you, you do, you are enjoying the liberty alone and causing others to stumble, you don't care. So let nothing be drawn down through selfish ambition. So if you have this mindset that, oh, I want, I, I'm, and you see, what, that the, the whole, the whole, the whole. Believer's lifestyle, walking in love, so if you are walking in love, you will have the person interested at that, right? Then he said, let this mind be in you, which was also in Christ Jesus. Be in the form of God, did not consider it robbery to be equal with God. He said, but made himself of no re-. Of a born servant. What. And your brother, you are more mature than your believer, than your low believer in Christ. Doesn't mean that you should step on the person's head and say, oh, no, you don't understand this thing. You are there, you are now being the charge of the person, that, I'm not sure this person can go far with God, oh. Because the way, the way he's living, no, 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 no. He said, let this mind that he was in Christ. Christ was in the form of God, right, he has power, right? But you see, he was humble. So because you know, you, you know, you enjoy the liberty in Christ, be humble. If this thing that I am doing, this lifestyle, will serve as a stumbling block to my brother. I will not do it, that's the bottom line of today's chapter. I hope this has blessed you, I'm going to read the verse twenty-three again and, you know. Just pray and trust God to help us. But he who is asserting about eating a particular thing is condemned if he eats. It's not acting from faith, whatever is not from faith is sin. Whatever is done without doubt is sinful. Uh, and I'm going to, you know, just do a little recap here. Um, uh, like I said, some of the Jews, you know, they, they, they struggle with abandoning all the old requirement of the law. Regarding eating things considered to be unclean. Why some Gentile believer may have been overly sensitive to everything. associated with, you know, paganism that eating meat offers to idols. So the bottom line, Apostle Paul is using this, you know, to T-shirts, like I said. This is what, this is happens, happened in the Bible times, right, this is what was happening then, you know. Because most of the times is, you know, food offers to idols that is causing this rift between, you know. The way to be glorified, you are what you, hallelujah. So I believe with that, we've come to the end of today's Bible study session. Like I said earlier, this session is to, you know, top our hearts. To always as believers go to the Bible, there's a lot to learn in the Bible, there's a lot. And I believe that if we are students of the word, our hearts will be changed. The way we relate to fellow believers, the way we relate to humanity as a whole will change. And all, a lot of this, um, you know, evil going about. Might reduce, because if you are studying the word, you are, you know, letting the thread of God to, you know. Tissue things that it ought to tissue, oh, you will be changed, you will be changed. Um, I know the Lord will give us grace to do that, and I want to encourage you, if you're not subscribed to our channel. Please do help us, you know, spread the word, to reach as many hearts as the Lord wants us. And you know, the beautiful one, the most important thing is that, if you have not given your life to Jesus. And you are here listening to the sound of my voice, it is not related. You know, the Bible says, there is only one name keeping on earth in which men can be saved. And it's okay if you don't believe it, Apostle Paul says. Knowing the terror of the Lord would persuade men, would not force people to save God. But because we know that there is a judgment at the end. Because we know, just as we have, you know, read from this scripture, that we will stand before God. To give our can, would persuade men, because of the love of God in our hearts. Ha, hmm, you see, the Bible says, eh, you see, hell was not made for humans. But unfortunately, uh, because of liberty, the choice to choose rights, many have find themselves there. So what if you are in this life, you are breathing, that means you still have an opportunity to give your life to Jesus. What are you waiting for? Or are you still trying to put your life, you know, in order, let me, you know, achieve this and achieve this before I fully serve the Lord? You see, whatever you are starting, because the, you can't really fully, naturally, men were created, this, this being, Bible says. When God finished creating man, a breath on him, the breath of life. So we, we are only cut off because of sin. But thank God he has sent his son, Jesus, to reconcile us back to him. So you can't live your life of God, you'll be miserable, no matter the money you have in this life, you'll be miserable. Because it is the, the, the life of God that gives us peace. So I want to encourage you, there is no middle ground. You are either in the kingdom of God, or you are in the kingdom of darkness. There's no, I'm just here, I'm, I'm not a church person, you know, there is no, I'm not a church person. If you are not in Christ, the devil is your father, fortunately. But I want to encourage you, you can switch side, it doesn't take much to switch side. Or you just, you know, believe in your heart and confess with your mouth that Jesus Christ came to die and save you. And the Bible says, you will be saved, very easy, right? Very easy, but it's very complex thing, that is difficult for men to really do. The Bible says, men love darkness, that is why. But God is merciful, we are praying for you, but you have to make the decision yourself. So give your life to Jesus today. And I pray that the good Lord and the mercy will restore your soul. Will fix it, will convict your heart in the name of Jesus. Father, we thank you for your word, your word has come forth, you know. Uh, this, this, the Bible says, we have these treasures in, eighteen verses, so God. As a human, I understand my limitations, I may not have passed, passed the world, you know. As you want me to pass it, but I know that your spirit, God, will do the remaining in the hearts of your children. I pray that as men that are listening, that will listen later, that the word of life will convict their soul. You will stir us up, oh God, to always want to live as you want us to live. You want us to live fully pleasing you, just as Christ would want us. And we ask for this grace as, as your children, to do this, to run this race to the end. Because it is only those that run to the end, it's them that will be saved. We ask for their saving power in Jesus' name, amen. Have a blessed, blessed afternoon, shalom.